Should like to call this special meeting of the Fairfield City Council to order, please, for Monday, February 8th. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bertani.
Here.
Councilmember Moynihan. I do not see her, so absent. Councilmember Pandaro. Councilmember Tim.
Here.
Councilmember Thompson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Vicaro. And Mayor Price.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Introductions, Mr. City Manager, please.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor and Council. The rules for this this meeting will be the same as the previous. We will begin with public comment. After public comment, there will be a presentation, a relatively short presentation by Don Labar, who is our homeless services manager. After that a presentation that she makes, it will be opened up for a discussion with the council as we talk about some of the issues she brings up and the direction that the council would like to go. And then the council will establish follow-on meetings from there. And so I believe Don is in the wings waiting. So once we're done with public comment, Mr. Mayor, we'll invite Don into the room and allow her to do her presentation.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, are there any public comments, please?
Um, let's see. Do you want me to read the thing? Persons wishing to address the city council on subjects within the jurisdiction of the council may do so at this time. The council cannot discuss or take actions on matters not on the agenda for this meeting. The council members may briefly respond to statements made or questions raised by the public. Ask for clarification from staff or further matter to staff. Request after report back to the council at a subsequent meeting or place a matter on a future agenda. Please raise your hand now if you'd like to make a comment or press star nine on your phone. We have a comment here from Mari. Go ahead, Mari.
Good afternoon. First, I just want to say that I feel like this conversation really can't be had without addressing like several organizations, kind of like to my last comment that I made last week at city council and that not just peripheral change, but there are several organizations that do houseless outreach and that work with the houses and that are very intimate with the houseless. So I feel like failure to address those like organizations has really been like a huge oversight on part of the like city because you can't really get a good understanding if you're not talking to folks who aren't on the ground. Moreover, I feel like there is an obligation that city officials, particularly y'all, are like actually on the ground with houseless folks and talking to them because a lot of them feel like you guys don't care about them. And I don't blame them for feeling that way because that's how the city's response has appeared. And so actually discussing with them like ways to fix these things because I mean, these are their lives that you guys will be discussing and eventually affecting. And I just think that it's extremely important that if we're talking about houselessness, like you guys always say, we need to be solution oriented, but I feel like the city isn't solution oriented. You guys look for long-term, easy solutions rather than just concrete, long-term solutions. And so some things that I have continually brought up and that I will clearly lay out now is that there doesn't need to be a hit, like there does, hit does not need to exist on the police force. Instead, you can have a group of people to help Don or help like a homeless service unit that is service-based, that does not use the car service system because houses folks don't trust police because of the violence that police have enacted on them and other things of that nature. Along with that, we should stop encampment cleanups because the CDC says that it's not even safe for employees to be doing. So you're not only putting city employees at risk, but you're putting houses folks at risk. Along with that, it just really inhumane to treat them in that way. Finally, you guys can have a legal encampment space. That way, it's easier to reach them and also so to where you don't have to deal with having to constantly do cleanups every single week or so. So have a legal encampment cleanup where they can also probably have cars and stuff like that because a lot of houses folks stay inside cars. We have a lot of, well, there's an article that just came out, which I feel like you guys should also mention because that looks really bad. But we have places, we have a lot of opportunity to do things. And I feel like even though I know city church has been very active and helpful, we can't just be relying on churches to do that. At some point, we have to have like actual housing, actual places to put these folks. That is long-term. That's not just a quick fix because I mean, we know houses is cyclical. And so you need to have a different solution. Most of you guys have been on council for decades. And for the new folks, I'm actually excited. Thank you for the new folks. I'm actually excited because hopefully we can get some actual concrete-based solutions, but you can't do that if you don't talk to the organizations since the people whose decisions you're affecting.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have Gina.
Good afternoon. I just have a couple of questions. And the first is, how much money has the city spent or allocated toward shelter services thus far? And what are the results? What are the outcomes of that spending? And then also, this will probably be covered in the presentation, but what are the specific barriers of the homeless entering shelter services? What are, has there been a gaps analysis? Has there been analysis? And I am a both a resident and a business owner in Fairfield. And so I'm interested personally in that. And I know that a lot of organizations have been collaborating on this. So those are my two questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't see any other hands up.
So we will close the public comment period and go right on to business now. Item number four, homeless initiative overview and council goal priority setting. Ms. Labar.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, and members of the public. I am Don Labar, homeless services manager in the city manager's office. It's great to see everyone today and I'm looking forward to this presentation and the following discussion. So this afternoon, we're going to talk about the state of homelessness in Fairfield. We're going to have an overview of the continuum of services available to reduce homelessness. We're going to talk about some current initiatives and some existing gaps and barriers. And then we'll conclude with a discussion where we'll be seeking your direction on some options that we believe that can further reduce our homes permanently by 50% by 2026. So I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. Amber, if you could, please. Okay. And let me know if you can all see that, okay? Great. So the first thing I want to do is just kind of give you some conceptual information and some context in putting Fairfield's homeless in context with the state of California as well as Solano County. So you hear me talk about the point in time count, which is the official HUD head method of counting homeless. And as you've heard me say many times, it is a snapshot in time. And the last formal data that we had was back in 2019. And at that time, California had a little over five and a half million homeless in California, which is the number one, we're number one in the country for homeless. Of that five and a half million, Solano County had 1,151. And of that 1,151, Fairfield had 277 of those. So I really wanted you to see this visual here to show. If you look between that little piece of pie, you'll see a little white slice and then, and then a teeny tiny little piece of, of blue. But then looking at the Bay Area, because what I don't want to do is I don't want to minimize. Obviously, we have work to do and there's human beings involved. And there's 277 people at the time of 2019 that needed to be addressed. But looking at the Bay Area, this I thought was also relevant to show in comparison to how from 2017 to 2019, how most of the Bay Area counties, their homeless counts actually went up from 2017 to 2019. Whereas Solano County and only two other counties in the Bay Area, ours went down. So again, if you look over at the, the data from 2017 to 19, ours went down by about 80 or so. But Fairfield specifically went down from 556 to 277. And that's a significant drop. So and again, remember, this is just a snapshot in time on a morning in January, you know, every other year. So as you recall, we, we let you all know that we would be conducting a gaps analysis. And I appreciate the caller's question about the gaps analysis. We conducted the gaps analysis over the summer and fall this last year to really dive into the, the, the true population of what we have here in Fairfield as far as what we are actually have here. So we can then direct our strategy toward that population. So if you look at these, these graphs here, I just wanted to provide you a general overview that shows you what we actually have here in Fairfield. And if you look at the first one, and again, this isn't going to total 100%, so if you're already adding it up, it's going to be over 100%. They could have self-reported in more than one category. But what is significant here is you will see that they, over half of them reported some sort of a physical disability. And that physical disability could be mental health. It could be a physical disability. It could be drug alcohol addiction. It could be an age, their age over being over 61. So that's over half and that's a significant number there. And then also a particular note here is in our vulnerable populations. While our veterans and unaccompanied youth and survivors of domestic violence, while those numbers have actually gone down here in Fairfield from the last pit count, our chronic homeless has gone up to 34%. And why this is significant is that Fairfield is 13% higher than the, the rest of the county. So Fairfield is carrying that higher number of chronic homeless here in Fairfield. And that's something again that we will need to address. And we'll talk about that a little bit more later. And then I think also of really significant information to point out here is looking at the race versus the general, as the general population versus the homeless. Really standing out here is the number of African-American, black homeless versus the general population. We have a 15% population here in Fairfield, but yet 49% of our homeless are African-American. That's, that's really shocking. But if it gives us any sort of reassurance, that's in line with, it's pretty consistent with how the rest of California is as well. So suffice it to say, that also means that California is looking at this as a whole, which gives us some tools moving forward so that we can start getting to the root of that. So we know how to address it. So I just want to reassure you in that, that Fairfield is not alone. Doesn't mean, it means it's okay, but Fairfield is not alone. And then as far as the household and gender, this is pretty consistent from the male to female and the head of households with children. We just have a slight decrease as far as the, those that are in shelters versus the families with children. But again, seeing it actually in the numbers shows that it isn't as significant as we thought it was. And then same with the Hispanic and Latinx numbers. The Fairfield population is 30%, yet our homeless is only 14%. So that again was some reassurance. So moving on here, we really also wanted to make sure that we're collecting data. We're a bunch of data geeks here. We really want to make sure that we're collecting data and following what the impacts of homelessness are on the city. You have noticed in your weekly, your council weekly, you said about every three to four months, you're getting a dashboard now because we want to be tracking the impacts on, on the city. And the reason we want to do that is because we want to make sure that as we are adjusting our strategies, we want to make sure that these numbers are going down. So we just started tracking those in the last six months, although we have pulled together the data for the entire year. But obviously, our goal is to see these numbers going down. And if they're not, then we know we need to adjust our strategy. So as you know, in mid-year last year, our city manager created the homeless services division in an effort to really centralize and consolidate homeless services here at the city. And we are a mighty team of three here. And our really, our general role here is to really be the central intake for all things homeless. So for example, we responded to over 200 calls and, and calls for assistance, whether they were from businesses or residents. And of those over, I want to say 260 calls or so, 190 of those were from residents and homeless seeking services. And we were able to get them connected to services. So again, having that central intake has really been, we think, much more beneficial and then coordinating with the other departments. So here's a good illustration of what we think shows how that coordination works with the other departments. Obviously, we can't do what we do by ourselves. And this isn't even showing you the service providers that we work with. But our key three departments that we work regularly with is our police department, housing services, and public works. And that really pulls all of us together when we have an issue or a problem that we need resolution on or we need brainstorming. And we need to figure out how we're going to create more opportunities. We pull these teams together and this is the team that we primarily work with. So what I want to lay out for you before I move forward is that we believe that based on the information that we are going to provide to you toward the end here for some opportunities and what came from the gaps analysis and the discussion that we'll have today, we believe that we'll be able, within the next five years, that we'll be able to meet three significant goals. We'll be able to increase shelter and housing opportunities by 175 beds. That's a significant number. We also believe that we're going to be able to increase our partnership opportunities with Solano County, particularly for that permanent supportive housing piece and reduce then that chronic homeless number by up to 25%, which would be 81. And then finally, we believe that, we comfortably believe that we will be able to decrease our unsheltered homeless by up to 50%. And that would be 125 homeless here in Fairfield. And we'll talk about that more in a little while when I go over the options with you. So you've heard me mention many, many, many times how I talk about what I'm bringing to you or an update to you, how this is only a piece, a piece of the puzzle or a piece of what that full continuum of services looks like. And it really is a full continuum and it's important that we have all of those pieces and that those pieces work together. The first piece is really that prevention and diversion piece. And significantly, and this also goes to another one of our callers' comments earlier, is that we do work with a lot of our service providers and they do provide those significant pieces such as the county who implemented Laura's law in 2019 that provides that significant diversion piece for our mental health. We have legal assistance, legal assistance that's provided, free legal assistance. Rental assistance is a huge piece and a lot of our service providers here in Fairfield and throughout the county have rental assistance funding as well as utility assistance. And those are prevention, right? We want to prevent the number of homeless or prevent families and individuals from even becoming homeless. And the second piece, which is really an important piece, is that outreach and engagement piece. And these are our homeless outreach teams. Of course, we have our own homeless intervention team. The county also has a homeless outreach team. And they work closely with our, our hit team. And then there's mobile services. City Church does regular outreach during the week. Before the pandemic, obviously, they were doing it a lot more. And then another piece that we're trying to build on right now is that street medicine piece. That would be the mobile mental health, the ability to provide flu shots, those, you know, low level of care, medical services that would hopefully prevent them from ending up in the hospitals. And the third piece is that coordinated entry and assessment piece. And this is really supposed to be that coordinated central intake, which we have here in Solano County. We're still working to build that up because it is a county-wide, it should be a county-wide coordination. Again, with the pandemic, it's become overloaded. They have over 900 people throughout the county that are on some sort of a waiting list and they're basically triaged. It's by a immediate need and an emergent need. So, but the goal would be that instead of cities or jurisdictions or outreach teams spending hours and hours trying to locate a shelter bed or, you know, rental funds, that they would be able to then go through the coordinated entry system. So we're still continuing to build on that. The next piece is that temporary housing piece. And this is our emergency shelters and our transitional housing. And that's also what we call. It could be from anywhere from six months to 18 months. And emergency housing, housing and sheltering could be anywhere from two days. It could up to six months. But both of those, again, depending on the person's need and what they are willing to at that time. That's why it's so important that, and I've said it before and I'll keep saying it, that it isn't a one-size-fits-all. Maybe the person is ready to, you know, go in for a couple of days and they need to start, you know, building that relationship, but maybe they're ready to go into a full-on intensive programming. But we need to have those additional pieces there. And then finally, our ultimate goal obviously is to get them in permanent housing. And to do that, we need that permanent supportive housing. And when we say permanent supportive housing, that is really that case management piece and the wraparound services that really need to be part of that permanent housing, particularly for our, those that have mental health issues, substance abuse issues. So we can make sure that we're not just putting a roof over their head and then walking away. We need to make sure that we are continuing to work with them, help provide them the tools and the resources that they need and help them eventually to become self-sufficient and, you know, really, but they need that piece. And then rapid rehousing, that's rental assistance. That's basically rental assistance for anywhere from 18 to 24 months. Sometimes if you like, particularly during the pandemic, if you've lost your employment or something has happened and you just need that extra assistance until things become stable again. Same thing with the vouchers and then housing locator services. That's a big piece as well, particularly when housing is so short. So looking at that full continuum, I want to just give you a very broad overview of how homeless services is working with our service providers to try to also fit into that continuum. So as you know, we recently completed the RFP and have awarded the contract for our kicking off our homeless-to-work initiative. That contract is going to Mission Samoa. And we're really excited to start working with them on that. And we hope, depending on the success of that, we hope that we'll be able to turn that into a permanent program. And that will be tying employment skills and employment life skills to housing and case management. And then of course, our temporary shelter permit program to expand opportunities for agencies, particularly churches, to use their facilities as an ancillary used to provide such as nomadic sheltering. And again, so it's not a permanent use, but again, just additional opportunities. And our pop-up shelter, we're completing our pop-up shelter setup with City Church. We're super excited about that and tying that pop-up shelter to all of the multitude of other services that City Church offers there at their facility. And then ideally transitioning them out of the pop-up shelter into City Church's other programs. And we kicked off our way home, the way home marketing campaign this year and really trying to show that there is no cookie cutter approach to how, you know, there is no one-size-fits-all. Everyone has their own needs and their own indicators for how they came to where they are. So we need to take an individual approach and help them get back home. And then of course, we established the COVID-19 emergency shelter, which is now in operation through April. And then some just quick overview of what we're continuing to work on. We're working with Solano College on a safe parking zone program. We are implementing a case management system so that we can better track and measure our outcomes and really help build better case management for our homeless that we're working out in the field with. And then our marketing and public education, we hear this a lot. This is something that we don't do well and we're really working with our mod team here so that we can start really getting information out to Councilmember Tim's comments last week, really making sure that we're getting information out to the public, but also out to our homeless. It's something that came up in the gaps analysis that they don't even know sometimes where to go for services. So we really need to be really putting some effort into targeting our residents, our businesses, as well as our homeless. Continuing to work on our, oh, sorry, continuing to work on our county partnerships. And then going back to that racial disparity. One of our staff, Shelley Turan, is participating in our regional racial equity action lab. And what we hope to come from this will be some really action items that we'll be able to implement here in Fairfield that will help identify the whys, right? We need to know the whys before we know how to address it, right? So the whys and then also then some action, actionable steps that we can take so that we can address, really specifically address that racial disparity in shelters. And then of course, continuing our regional strategic plan through Capsolano. So here's a very general overview of, I think is important to share with you as far as challenges and gaps that has been identified both through our team, but also that came through the gaps analysis. And I think what's significant here is that you'll see a lot of crossover. For example, mental health and substance abuse, that's obviously an issue that we've identified and that also obviously came from the gaps analysis. We definitely need more support with the mental health and substance abuse. And of course, shelter capacity, right? But we know that. And then that permanent supportive housing and case management piece, right? With such a high number of the chronic homeless here, what we're lacking here is that, that case management and wraparound services that really support the, the chronic homeless. So we can end that cycle of them just, you know, rotating in and rotating out because they don't have that support that they need. And then the lack, oh, I did it again, sorry. The lack of willingness for homeless to accept services. Why is that? Is it a trust issue? Is it because the services that were, are being offered don't match what the actual need is? Are we not doing a thorough enough case assessment? Is our outreach not significant enough? So, right, I think that was a real eye-opener when we created the temporary shelter at Bay North for 50 beds and we couldn't get any more than 15 to 20 of those beds filled at a time. So obviously, we need to break down those barriers and find out what that is. And we believe that a lot of that is awareness and access. And then we have agencies that are fighting over limited funding, right? And that's not really a good model for agencies to be pitted against each other when they're, you know, they're all fighting over the same funding. And grant funding means, you know, there's more reporting and a lot of, again, our smaller agencies are not familiar with the reporting requirements and the eligibility requirements. And then a particular importance is that regulatory compliance. When we work with Caltrans or our healthcare providers and we hit barriers such as HIPAA laws or jurisdictional laws, like we're not allowed to address these areas because it's a Caltrans jurisdiction. And so we're constantly facing these regulatory compliance agreements or areas. So we need to find ways that we can move past those. So finally, and here's where I'd like to walk through these, but then really open it up for discussion and then direction from you all. Because here's where we believe after our research and in working with our service providers here, that we believe that we can make a significant dent in reducing that homelessness and increasing shelter beds and really reducing that, that number by 50%. We've been talking about the navigation center at 310 Beck. The operator is 100% onboard. We think that we can get those additional 80 beds filled. That would give, and with the average stay of about, I think it's 180 days. I'm doing my math quickly. No, yes, 180 days. That would give us another 160. We would be able to serve another 160 a year. The deficit there is a million a year. If we're looking at a regional center, then that needs to be a regional cost, right? So that's something that we'll have to look at as we are continuing to work on that. We've talked many times about the Kahoots crisis team that is The Kahoots crisis team that is, uh, in Oregon, Eugene, Oregon. This is really a significant type of program where rather than dispatching police officers to. Homeless related calls that are not crime related. Is these Kahoots teams, um, really can reduce those calls for service to, uh. Through dispatch, for example, in two thousand nineteen, the Kahoots team actually took eighteen thousand. Uh, eighteen thousand calls for service that were able to be freed up, freed up those police officers from having to respond. And then the Ohio Street, we've had Ohio Street boarded up for quite a while now. We're working with the housing department to get. Uh, an operator for that shelter piece. Uh, so we think we could have it, uh, twenty four beds there for that shelter piece. And then, uh, making City Church, uh, a permanent location for that pop up shelter. And again, this is like that little. Half of the step of baby step, right? So that they could transition out of the pop up into. Those more transitional type of housing beds there at City Church. Um, that would give us another twenty five beds. And Mission Samoa, Mission Samoa has approached us and, um, is eager to. Create a small, uh, emergency shelter as well. And we know the population that Mission Samoa works with. It's a really difficult population. And they run a really tight program. We don't get calls for service. To, uh, any of the houses that Mission Samoa runs because they run a great program. Um, and just like City Church, they have to want to be in the program, but they get great results. So we think again, we could expand that by twenty six beds. And then expanding our existing TBRA program. Here's where we think that we could actually complement that, uh. The, the permanent supportive housing by using our existing home funds. And applying that in complement with our service providers to provide that rental assistance for anywhere from eighteen. Months to two years. And then those service providers could then be providing that case management. So again, it's that those partnerships that we're looking at and we think. That could help up to twenty individuals and families. And then we've talked many times about motel conversions. This is a pretty popular thing right now in communities. And, um, just kind of looking around at different properties that, uh, we could secure. Um, we could do anywhere from thirty five to sixty individual units. Um, anywhere from a cost of eight million to fifteen million, which is not cheap. Um, and obviously when we're looking at more of those major types of projects. We would obviously the housing, our housing department. Is, uh, needs to be fully involved and working with us to find. Layered funding on that. But again, that could provide an additional thirty five to sixty units. So I've got some totals down here below, but I want to show you that we could, if we work on these where I've bolded them. We could increase our shelter bed capacity by a hundred and seventy five. Our rapid rehousing, permanent supportive housing by twenty. And then potentially if we work on a motel conversion, we could add another thirty five to sixty permanent supportive housing units. And then obviously over in that far column here, it's not cheap. Right? Um, but this would show, uh, the total estimated cost for doing those projects. And then we believe. Uh, we could do several of those in year one. And if you, you know, depending on your direction and recommendations. And how you want to prioritize, if you like any of these, none of these. That's how we would go. So that's the end of my presentation. I am, um. Available for questions, comments, and then, uh, obviously I would like to open it up for discussion and seek your direction.
Thank you, Ms. Labarre. Colleagues, comments, observations?
Mayor, I have a couple of questions.
Councilman Tim, please.
I don't know how to fix a zoom, but, uh. What is the cost? How much have we spent? Do you know since twenty nineteen?
So I can, is that, are you, I'm assuming you're asking me, so I.
Yeah, yeah, Don, all these questions, I gotta litany of them, so. Do you have any idea?
Yeah, the costs that I tracked, um, I have not tracked any of the costs for two thousand twenty yet. But for two thousand and nineteen, we spent, uh, a little over two million. Responding to homelessness. Um, and I know that number is two point two million and I say responding because. Uh, if you recall, this was back under our previous strategy where we, uh. Were, um, funding that was our, for our homeless intervention team. Um, our public works heart team and you know, all of the supplies, uh, and their equipment. And then of course, um, my team, mine and my, you know, my staff team. Um, our salaries and then, uh, some regional planning. Our coordinated entry, et cetera.
Okay, so out of the, out of the two hundred and seventy seven, uh, on the, on the pit count in twenty nineteen. Any clue how many of those were housed?
Specifically, no, because I, I can tell you that prior to the homeless services division. Being established, um. I was not tracking, uh, any sort of permanent housing. The hit team may have numbers that they have, but I don't, I don't know their numbers. It wasn't until the homeless services division was created that we started tracking numbers and the numbers that we have now. Are numbers based on our service providers. So I could tell you what our service providers have done.
No, okay. And that's my next question. How many service providers are?
If you don't.
We have that are helping and how many have been housed?
Okay, if you don't.
No, and it might take you a minute. If you don't have the numbers right now, that's fine.
Actually I do, and I actually had it on a slide. So if you don't mind, I'm gonna sh- share it. Hold on one second. Rather than just reading it off. This might be, I think this will be helpful. Can you see that?
I can.
So for example, uh, Shelter Solano was able to assist over two hundred people with rental assistance, utility and food. Can be, uh, has housing, transitional housing for twenty four. Mission Samoa was able to serve twenty five people last year, which is low for them. Uh, they would normally do more than that, but because of COVID, they reduced that number. We had obviously, uh, a hundred and thirteen were served through project room key, but that's temporary, right? That's temporary housing. And then three ten Beck, actually, uh, even though they've only averaged, they're averaging anywhere from fifty to seventy. Sheltered at a time, they were still able to serve two hundred and forty eight individuals. Last year, um, seventy three of them have been housed. Um, our emergency COVID project, uh, we were able to serve eighty two. Um, that was through December. Um, we currently have twenty housed there now. Um, I don't have, uh, the current numbers though, I'm sorry on the. Current outcomes. And then City Church, they also provide, uh, thirty a bed, uh, thirty five beds for transitional housing. And they're there anywhere from a year to eighteen months, depending on when they graduate from their program and they have about a ninety percent success rate. And then that permanent housing, um, again, through rapid rehousing and again, that's the funding for, uh, rental assistance. Uh, Shelter Solano again was able to serve, um, a hundred, a hundred persons. And can be was able to serve a hundred and six. So that's various funding sources.
And, okay, council member Tim, I've got some numbers from the hit team here that Deanna has sent me according to. A slide that was shared with her by, uh, by Walt Tibbetts. Uh, in two thousand nineteen, there were eighty six homeless people placed in shelters. Uh, twenty eight were relocated with family. By the homeless intervention team, ninety eight had coordinated entry referral to more permanent housing. Uh, this year, uh, the numbers they're showing about a hundred and thirty six between family reunification, placing them in shelters. Uh, so there, there is some success. Uh, and some of these numbers, we're getting much better at tracking now, the whole premise, well, not the whole premise, but one of the. Reasons for creating a centralized division here is because they are going to be and are heavily data driven and they're counting everything. Uh, and that's the only way we'll be able to tell if we're having any success. And you're seeing some of those numbers that. That Don is presenting, uh, on what we're counting. Some of the, uh, information that we have as we're counting is, we've only been counting at a short time. Uh, but we've, we've begun counting those things and keeping track of that, so.
No, that's, that's helpful and, and, and I'm not here to criticize. I'm just looking for. For some in-depth information because if we add up just very quickly, all the numbers of people we've helped. And our pit count in twenty nineteen was two seventy seven. Uh, can you, I don't know what it's gonna be, uh, in twenty twenty one. But I, I, nobody's blind. You can drive down and you can see everybody on the linear trail and. Uh, I don't believe that it's gone down. I, I believe that it's gone up. And my next question is, um.
But, but let me kind of address that pit count again. Remember that pit count is just a, an in-time count. How accurate it is on an average, we don't, we don't really have that. In order to have a real strong number. You'd, you'd be counting almost weekly and taking averages, but unfortunately it is what you get. So that number may really vary.
Right. And, and, and I actually, I, I agree with that because my next question is. And Don, you can, you can take this off now. You go back to regular screen is that, uh, matter of fact, bring up the money. Probably your last one, how much money? And while you're doing that, and Stefan, this is for you, I'm also looking at crime stats. We know that in the summertime homeless were probably creating at least one or two fires a day. I'm, I'm aware of at least two homicides, uh, and then tons of assaults. And, and that's probably where I want to look is, I understand, and one of the speakers earlier today said, well. We can get them housing, but once we get them into housing, and Don, this question is for you. Is do these numbers include, uh, the case management, the mental health, the drug abuse? Uh, workers, because I don't believe, you know, we keep saying we're gonna, the county's gonna have to get on board. Why don't we just pretend the county's never gonna get on board? I know they just cut their mental health funding, uh, and that was cut by the state. But I think if we think the county's gonna bail us out, I think we're only kidding ourselves. So I'm looking at crime, crime stats. And then the money, uh, if it includes, uh, case managers.
So the, what you're seeing here is, uh, would be one hundred percent provided by. The service provider listed, for example, City Church. Pop up and Mission Samoa as well as the navigation center. Those will be provided by the service provider. However, uh, in my discussions with the service providers. Um, as well as what came from the gas analysis is that we are severely lacking in that case management and outreach piece. So because, and again, I go back to the example, uh, we had, uh, a facility that would take. That could have taken fifty. But, uh, we were only able to get about fifteen to twenty in at a time depending on the day. Um, and that's for a multitude of reasons, right? But that, those case managers and those outreach workers are the ones that have. The knowledge and the expertise to do those case assessments and identify those. The indicators for why they're homeless. So we have Mary Ann, uh, Mary Ann Dawkins. I'm gonna say her last name wrong, uh, with the hit team, but we have one. So, you know, she's. Uh, you know, she's one case manager for, you know, approximately two, three hundred homeless. So. What we would like is for her, uh, to complement our city programs. Um, but, uh, you know, is it enough? No. So. Uh, you know, we're hoping that by again, increasing these partnerships with the county. Um, and with the service providers, uh, that we'll be able to, um. You know, to, to meet those needs, but, um, that's a piece that, that's severely lacking. We could, we can have the shelter beds and we can have the permanent supportive housing. But if we don't have that case management or that outreach piece. Um, it's still going, I think we'll still see that revolving, that revolving cycle.
Okay, that's, I've got more questions, but I'll let somebody else jump on board. Thank you so very much.
Any other comments, colleagues? Councilman Tonison, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Don, that was a really good presentation. Uh. The, the outreach, uh, how does the outreach and the case management fit into the shelter and housing piece?
So I would say right now, um, with the best of intentions, it's, uh, it's siloed. So we have. We have agencies that work, uh, for example, City Church has, uh, you know, a fantastic, they do fantastic outreach. And, uh, then the county has their own, uh, their own outreach team, but I would say they're, they're spread pretty thin. Considering they have to serve the entire county. And then of course, we have our own homeless intervention team. And I would say that they all work really well together. But it's, uh, it's siloed and you're limited by your funding source. And you're limited by again, your regulations as far as what you're able to do. So. Um, City Church does what they do all, just I think through donations. But, uh, the county particularly, they are, um, they are totally have to be driven by what their funding source is. So. Um, they do mental health outreach, which I think we would all agree is not enough. Um, even they would agree it's not enough, but we have a great working relationship with them. Um, but again, they even have to try to maneuver through their own agencies to try to get people placed. And hit their own barriers. So, and it's, it's really a lot of the times it's tied to those funding sources. So, uh, with our, with our outreach team, you know, through the homeless intervention team. Their only barriers, I think, are just because there, there, there isn't enough of them to do what they have to do, but also they've got to try to maneuver through. You know, the various funding sources and the different agencies and finding who has what and where people would fit. And it's a very cumbersome, very, uh. You know, it's a, it's, it's a, it's a, it's quite a process. And it needs help.
And, and do you have suggestions for getting everyone on the same page or are we starting these conversations like this to try and facilitate that?
Yes.
Good answer. Um, just one more question, Mayor. Who, who have we? Who else can we reach out to or who else have we reached out to, um, to facilitate more? Be, be at a warming center. We're, we're restricted by a lot of, uh, issues to, to go to. The sports, I still call it the sports center, but we're restricted on a lot of those avenues, aren't we? On, on getting, on, on just creating warming centers, uh, at the city facilities.
Um, actually, uh, I'm, my team is gonna be working with, uh, Chief Sturdy over in fire and Parks and Rec. And we're gonna be updating our, uh, policies on, uh. Whether it's a warming center or emergency type. Emergency type, uh, creating a warming center or a cooling center or, you know, if it's fires or floods or anything like that. So that we can have, uh, a super fast coordinated response. Um, and to council member Pandora's comments, uh, last week, uh, in. In the language and communication that's meeting as, as many people as possible. As far as like the boots on the ground or through their smartphones, et cetera. So we're gonna be working on something like that. Um, but, uh.
That's, that's.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Vice Mayor, please.
Thank you. Okay. Uh, when, when it's time for, um, direction, I do have a few things I want to say, but. I'll, I'll hold my thoughts on that, but I do have a couple of questions, Don. Um, number one, how many people are in the Solano County hit team? Or not, well, yeah, they have their own team, not a hit team, but do you know?
I, I'm, I'm having a hard time hearing you.
How many people are on the, uh, the team, the Solano team, the Solano County team?
I don't know. I could find out, um, but I know offhand.
Okay, next question. This might be for the city manager and you. So I hope you guys can hear me. I guess people have a hard time. I'll try to talk a little louder. What, has there been any meetings set up with the county? Cause I'm gonna go back to what councilman Tim said. About, you know, maybe we should just, you know, think, and, and yeah, maybe we do, but right now my thing is. Um, we need their services, okay? And we have to start setting up meetings with them. And I don't know if meetings have been set up, but you know, as far as any kind of direction, which I'll talk about later. Um, I really do believe that maybe a couple of members of the council and some city staff need to address this with the county. Because the county. need to address this with the county, because the county does need to support the cities in the county, especially the county seat. And we've been talking about this for like two, three years now, about the county, and we always get stuff thrown back at us and say, well, you know, what, yeah, but the city has to do it. I agree, we have to do whatever we can. And like Don, what you said about, you know, case management being the number one issue as far as, of lacking, okay, in this whole process. To me, that's where we really have to get to. Besides the navigation center, we can talk about that later as far as direction. But I really do feel that we need to put some pressure on the county, you know, from the city perspective and say, hey, listen, we've been talking about this for a long time and we're not getting anything back. So, um, that's, that's one of the things I would like to see. And I don't know if you can answer that, if meetings have been set up, or Mr. City Manager, maybe you have a, any answer.
Yeah, we've, uh, we have had meetings. I've sat in on some of those meetings with the county. Um, I would say that we're getting more traction. Um, but you're right, it, it, you know, we cannot, um, manage this, this massive challenge that we have by ourselves. There's just no way.
Right.
Uh, this is a, homelessness is a global issue, it really is. But let's pull it down to, to our neighborhood, it's a state issue. And there are things that the state, um, uh, is trying to provide on one end, but other areas where they're lacking, uh, areas that the county needs to step up and provide some of those services and areas where the city needs, needs to step up and continue to provide services. So it's a, um, it's a coordinated effort that must happen, um, up and down that, that government line, if you will. And then incorporating all of the nonprofits, the faith-based, all of those other things as well. That's the only way we're gonna be able to properly manage this. So, I haven't given up on the county. I think the county recognizes that and they see that. I think there's some frustration there as well from, uh, members of the county that we've spoken to. Uh, a lot of it is a, is a, uh, is a resource issue, uh, but we'll continue to push for that. Um, and, uh, and not give up on that. Uh, I, I agree. I'd love to be able to say, we're not gonna get help from the county. I feel what Councilmember Tim said there, because that's, I walk away sometimes thinking, forget it, we're just gonna need to figure this out on our own. The problem is, is we don't have not only the, the resources to be able to do it on our own, but we don't have the, uh, we don't have the other things that are required there as well. We don't have access to, uh, the mental health, uh, professionals, uh, the health, uh, those kinds of things that are county mandated kinds of, of, of programs. We don't have the taxing ability to be able to bring in money to those things. Uh, you know, much of the tax money that's brought in, uh, you know, spending that on other areas, uh, takes away from, what your taxpayers pay taxes for. Um, and so we have to be very careful, uh, about those kinds of things. But we are working with them. We've had meetings with them. We continue to meet with them. We're seeing some traction. But in some cases, you know, if you can get four inches in a week, you're feeling pretty good. I know it's slow, but we're making progress.
Right, my, yeah, and I, I appreciate that. I guess my last comment before we, you know, I'll listen to whoever wants to speak. I just think we need to call them out on it. And say, hey, you know what? Um, we need some assistance here. And, you know, they are the umbrella of the county, right? Or, or all the cities in the county. But I also think that we need, if we're gonna look at focus or channeling some funds, maybe we do need to look at, more case management from our perspective. How are we gonna provide it? How are we gonna fund it? Just like Councilman Tim said, you know, okay, maybe we need to start looking at ways we can provide that ourselves. But I also think we should call the county out and what, you know, what kind of help we need and what they are not providing for the city.
Now, uh, Councilmember, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor, I wanna be very clear that, um, we have a, a really great working relationship with the staff at the county. Um, uh, the, uh, they created a, pretty much a homeless, homeless and housing division last year. Again, probably with the same intentions of what, uh, our city manager has done with this, to consolidate those housing and homeless resources. And Emery Cohen and Miranda Mira's there. I mean, we can reach out to them anytime. Um, they are willing to help and willing to be at the table. Um, Jerry Huber, Debbie Vaughn, over Health and Social Services, um, again, but I think they're limited by, you know, it's like, I can only go so far, right, without needing authority to go farther. I think they're limited by that same thing. So I just wanna make, make it very clear that they are always willing to be part of solutions and be at the table. I think they're just, um, I think it, they need to go higher.
Yeah, Don, and I'm not saying, I'm not, you know, saying anything negative about the relationship you, your team has with their team. I'm talking at a higher level. That's who we need to call out. Okay. So, I appreciate that, though. Thank you.
And Mayor. Councilman Tim?
Yeah, if I could just tank him real quick. Yeah, I'm, I'm not bashing the county, but you know what? This is a Zoom meeting for, for ideas. Um, we have a legislative platform in Sacramento. We have assembly members, we have senators. We didn't create this problem, right? And I'm not sure can our responsibility, but, I mean, let's just, just call it what it is, is, we're not gonna raise taxes. If we wanna fund this, where you gonna take it from? Adult Recreation Center or Children's Programs? I mean, so, I, I, I wanna be very, very honest here. But I'm ready to start screaming on the steps of the Capitol. And you can blame it on, you know, Prop sixty-four, forty-six, one oh-two, bingo, right? But this is where this conversation ultimately needs to end up. So no, I'm not bashing the county, cause they're under the same constraints we are, but, we gotta be real, real honest and, and, and like I said, this is not to point fingers, but this is where we're gonna look for solutions, so.
And I can, I, I wholeheartedly concur with both of you. Uh, Councilman Pandora, please.
Hi, thank you, Don, for the presentation. Um, I had a question regarding the individuals who are currently in Project Room Key and at Bay North. So after these programs, and where are those individuals going to fit into the continuum of care? And then also with regards, I know the end of, the end of it should be permanent supportive housing. Um, how is, I'm sure you do work with the Housing Services Division, and so I know in our presentation, the retreat, uh, that might be a question for Latam, but there was a, um, there was said to have been five hundred, housing units in the pipeline, and I wanted to see if any of that housing was, um, would be going towards any of these achievable opportunities, being that permanent supportive housing is, at the, the part of that, the end piece of the continuum of care.
That's a great question. I think, um, so we just started a, a working group again of the service providers, as well as our, uh, Resource Connect Solano, which is our coordinated entry system. And, uh, it, it initially was case conferencing, which would, uh, focus on getting those that are housed at Project Room Key into that long-term permanent housing. It's, it's, it's become very difficult. In fact, we just had a meeting this morning. And, uh, what we're finding is the difficulty is that what they need is that really higher level of care, such as, uh, adults, uh, like adult assisted living. Um, and again, that mental health, that mental health piece. So, uh, what we need to do is, um, we're gonna have to get all of the, those agencies that provide those services at the table. And the other thing we're gonna have to consider is maybe we provide some sort of bridge housing, until we can identify that permanent supportive housing. Because what we don't want, what nobody wants is for them to end up back out on the street. So, uh, I think realistically, it'll have to be some sort of bridge housing. And we have, again, we have, the service providers are all willing to be part of that discussion, which is fantastic. And they're willing to be thinking outside of the box and being creative and finding those solutions. Um, I would imagine funding will be some sort of, you know, it'll have to be some, some sort of a discussion. And I think, uh, you know, as we're looking at these options, um, in my mind anyway, I'm including those, there's fifty of them now at the Fairfield project. I'm including those fifty in how, you know, in laying out and where we're going, where, where we're gonna get them transitioned.
Any other comments before I make a couple of quick statements? Okay, thank you. Homelessness, we know, is increasingly more and more expensive each day. So one of my questions, Don, is you were talking about the people who were able to, to some extent or other, move away from homelessness. Are you seeing an increase in the influx of new folks to Fairfield? Who find themselves in very precarious positions? And if so, whence are they coming and what are the reasons for their coming here?
So Mayor, again, that's a great question, and I cannot wait until we have our case management system in place. And so we will be able to be tracking, uh, the data from, uh, the beginning of the year through the end of the year. Because unfortunately, all I can tell you is what we've been tracking from twenty twenty. We do know that there were a thousand, a little over a thousand people who entered the homeless system of care, in twenty twenty in Fairfield. But that means that they were looking for rental assistance, they were looking for shelter services. Uh, so it could be a myriad of services that they were actually accessing in that time. What I don't know is if those are, uh, new, you know, new people entering, uh, the system of care, or if those are duplicated. Uh, because again, we've just started tracking that. But I can tell you of that thousand, eight hundred, almost nine hundred of those, are in some sort of transitional, transitional housing, or they're presently housed, or they're in some sort of a shelter. So that's the good news. What we are seeing, uh, heavy demand for is the rental assistance, which I think we expected with COVID. And that's why Cap Solano has been wanting to dedicate so much funding to the rental assistance. And I know we did just through the city as well, through the CDBG funds, that rental assistance is really, assistance and those preventative means than we are for all accessing, wanting, uh, shelter services.
A few years ago, the Fairfield Tussin Unified School District announced that they had more than three hundred students, who were sleeping in cars at night. They have that. Are you aware of that? Are you aware of how many children, school age, are sleeping in cars at night?
I don't have the numbers of the students in the vehicles, but I can tell you that we just started working with the Fairfield Tussin Unified School District. Uh, we just applied for a grant for funding, for some discretionary funding, so we can help, these homeless students that are homeless intervention team. Um, and we worked with our homeless intervention team as well to identify what those needs could be. So we could assist them with purchasing laptops or clothes, or whether it's meals or whatever that current need is. And we wanted to do that in partnership with the school district, as well as with the, uh, Fairfield Community Services Foundation. So as you know, they've been very big in our at-risk youth. So we hope between the three, the three agencies, between the city, the school district, and the foundation, we can really fill a significant need for those kids.
You know, that's, for me, that's a very important issue, and I'm certain it is for all of us. But one of the other concerns I have is homelessness is becoming exceedingly more expensive year after year. And, and I'm not quite so certain tha- that some of the programs are as efficient as they can be. Can you speak to that at all?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, maybe I can address that. That's one of the reasons that we're, um, so, and becoming so data-driven, is so that we can measure every program that we're implementing to find out what are these impacts. I wish we had done this three or four or five years ago. I think we have gotten better over time at recognizing what we need. Uh, but it's like our police department is also very data-driven. Our fire department is data-driven. Homeless Services, uh, is, is becoming incredibly, um, uh, detail-oriented when it comes to this type of information, so that we can measure it. Um, but we're in the beginnings of that. And so, we're collecting data. It'll take some time to kinda take all of that data that we've collected over time, and to be able to, to see what the story is that's being told. What's impactful, what not so much? Are there areas where we need to refocus, uh, our investment in these programs? Uh, so that, uh, so that we're reaching out to more and helping more with, uh, getting bigger bang for the buck, so to speak. So, that's where we're at. Unfortunately, a lot of it has been, let's try this, now let's try that, let's try this. And, and now we're hyper-focused on, on the, on the information that comes from trying these programs, so we know what works and what doesn't work, and what needs to be tweaked, et cetera, as we move forward.
And I've been following on a regular basis, the job, the job board postings that I receive by email almost every week now. And, and the Workforce Investment Board, I know, i- is involved, but probably to a, a much more limited extent. Veterans who are jobless are not taking advantage of some of those opportunities. So my suggestion is, is that we take a good look at what it will take for somebody who is dealing with the homeless in very meaningful ways, to convince a few of them, that here's something you might wanna try. My concern is, is that working may be more trouble than just standing in line. That's my concern. And when people give up hope, and I'm thinking about the time after World War One, uh, when all the GIs came home from Europe, and they had to, they had to have a big march, a big protest. And then the depression came along, and following the depression, what was the work, what was a, a program that FDR created? And it was called the Civilian Conservation Corps, where people would be, would be hired, and they would move out into the forested areas, particularly on the East Coast. And they would build trails, fire breaks, that sort of thing. And it worked. It gave them some sense of dignity and purpose, and caused many of those folks to go on to be ready to serve in World War Two. I think we're dealing with a very, very expensive problem that doesn't seem to have a realistic solution at this point.
Well, I, I think, though, I think realistically, and, and I, I just remembered, I did not respond to Councilmember Pandora's second question. And that's that permanent supportive housing piece. So our housing division is creating those units. They have, uh, successfully worked with Mid Penn. Um, you've probably heard about that project, and I think, there's going to be sixty-five to seventy units, and I'm sorry, I don't know the number offhand. Um, but that, of those, there's going to be, I believe, thirty-five of those will be set aside specifically for homeless units. And again, those are, those are the numbers that are really going to help us address that chronic, that chronic homelessness, because those are the ones that will be able to tie to that case management piece, and those wraparound services. And I think that, again, is that piece, to the mayor's point, where we're really, um, that's the piece that until we start addressing that, um, and to Councilmember Tim's point earlier, until we start addressing that, um, we're not going to have those long-term results.
And there are some great things being done there as well, Mr. Mayor. If you take a look at what Bay North has been doing with, helping folks find work, uh, getting them, uh, everything from helping them create resumes. Some of the folks that have been down there, and some of the instructions and work courses that they're doing with them. Uh, the, the Samoan, uh, folks, uh, have the work training programs that are going there with auto mechanics and other things. So, that is a piece of it. You know, it's everything from housing to work to, I mean, you name it, mental health. There are just so many pieces that, that fit into this. Don's right, it's, it's not a one-size-fits-all. Uh, every individual has a specific, personal need or needs that, that need to be addressed. And, uh, understanding what those needs are is, is half the battle. And then getting them the resources and the help in order to, uh, to, to get where they need to be.
Now, the problem is a, is becoming an even more daunting one than it was perhaps a year or two ago. Uh, I don't see it improving much. And I'm not a pessimist. None of us are, or we wouldn't be in this position we're in tonight. Councilman Tonason, please.
And Mayor, have we, and, and I think this may have been discussed, but maybe a, a, a subcommittee of council members with Fairfield, Vacaville, Sussun, and maybe the county, uh, to try to get a regional approach, uh, going for like a navigation center, kinda pool our resources, resources. Um, has, has any of that been discussed? I, I thought I'd spoken with somebody about it, but, you know, maybe bringing us all together and trying to figure out a, a, a way to stop, we're, we're just moving everybody around.
Councilman Tim?
I was gonna say, Scott, what I found, cause I've obviously been on the council while, is when we can't make a decision, we put it out to a subcommittee. And I'm not making fun of you at all, but I've been on the subcommittees. And people can't meet, you can't ever get together, and, and there's nobody in the room that can make a decision. By that, I mean, we don't have the people that hold the purse strings. And for that, you need to. we don't have the people that hold the purse strings. And for that, you need the city managers, or somebody that has that authority. And I found that to be I don't want to say a waste of time, because we all commiserate together. It's like a big therapy session. But by the time we're done in six months, absolutely nothing happens. You know, one of the other things, the same correlation, and Doris was talking about it, is when they come out of Project Runway, what are we going to do with them? Mid Penn, that's seventy-seven units. I don't even know if they broke ground yet. But one of the things that we're also leaving out is what happens if we can solve all the problems, but you still have the core people that are committing the crimes, that refuse to go in. And what are we going to do about that? And I'll save that for where we're gonna, for our next discussion, but we got to put everything on the table, but, and I was gonna say, Scott, if, if you want to do a subcommittee, by all means, I, I don't think I could poo the idea, but I think we're smart. We have the staff that can put us in connection with staff from other cities. But we need to have the decision-makers in the room when we meet. So that's my two cents. Thanks.
And Mr. Mayor, let me address something here, and, and I know Scott's got something here as well, but here's the reality. Homelessness is not going to get fixed in the next year, in the next five years, in the next ten years. It's, it's, it's an issue that has existed for ever, since society was here. It's going to exist. Our goal here in the city is to manage that the challenges of homelessness. To reach out and help as many people as we possibly can, and be as effective and efficient in doing that, and bringing together other partnerships, and building strong relationships with the county, other cities, nonprofits, faith-based organizations, you name it. And creating a centralized place within the city that can help manage those things was our first goal, and that's what we've done here. If I take a look, or if we take a look at all of the challenges that are out there, I'm with you, you just shake your head and say, my gosh, there's just no way, it's overwhelming. We can't do that. And so this year, and what, what Don has proposed in some goals for this year is we find a few things that we can do to improve the, the, the things that are there, to increase outreach, to increase some of the services that are available. Let's take this in managed bites, if we can. Set some goals and see what we can do. And then take the next step, and then the next step, and then the next step. And while we're taking these steps, we're constantly looking with data and the information, the things you mentioned. How do we know whether it's working? We're constantly analyzing those programs and things that we put in place, and determining what do we need to tweak, what programs aren't working, what, what, what do we need to change, what do we need to replace? I mean, that's, that's where we're at. That's what we can do. I, I would love to have one magic pill that we could take that would just eradicate homelessness. But again, like, like you said, Mr. Mayor, you're not a pessimist, you're a realist. The reality is that's just not going to happen. And no matter what we do, we're going to have our critics. They're gonna
Oh, yeah.
criticize us for not doing enough, or not, or doing too much, or spending too much money here, or not enough there. All we can do is sit down and say, okay, this is what we can accomplish this year. Let's tackle it. Let's get the other partners together. Let's make the difference and the changes where we can, and let's build off of that. And that's where we're at.
So to follow up on my comment. So it's, it's, there's nothing stopping me from talking to other council members. What, what, what I'm looking at is that we're, are we going to form a navigational center? It sounds like we are. Is that going to be all on our own, or will we be reaching out to other councils and even the county to do that, or is that something that we do in, in our silo?
The answer is yes to both. We move forward in, in that respect, like Councilmember Tim said. But at the same time, we're reaching out to the other cities, the counties, and trying to get some coordination with that as well. One of the challenges that we have is when, when you're dealing with a homeless population, they don't always stay put. As, as we get better at providing services, oftentimes, because we're better at providing services and providing shelters and things, you start to, I want to say import, but in a way, you start seeing homeless coming from other cities, neighboring cities, into your city to be taken care of. Well, what do you do? Do you put up a fence and say, no, you're not allowed here? You can't do that. There's a humane part there as well. So if they're coming in from Vacaville, or Benicia, or wherever, these folks need help also. And you've got to try and, you know, we're not sitting there with a notepad saying, did you just come over the border? We'll go over there, you know, they, they need to take care of you. It just doesn't work that way. So, yeah.
I'll go ahead and, I'll go ahead and leave it at that.
We want to increase that, but at the same time, if we don't get any, any help there, any coordination, we're still going to be going down this road as best we can on our own.
Mr. Vice Mayor.
Yeah, just to, to follow up on what Councilman Tonason said. Scott, that was actually a really good point, because if we are going to, and I believe Don and I have talked about this numerous times regarding a navigation center, and how critical that's going to be, you know, to, to our area, we are definitely going to need to talk to other cities around us, because that's the whole key. I know we had discussed visiting a couple of navigation centers around the state. Unfortunately, you know, COVID hit pretty hard out, right after that. So we sort of, you know, pan that idea, at least for now, but we still should do it, because we can get ideas from other, other centers that are being run. I visited a couple that were run extremely well. So to your point, Scott, absolutely, you know, we definitely do need to, you know, talk to other cities and, you know, maybe a committee that centers around that navigation center specifically. So we can talk about that, because we're going to need to get the support from, you know, Vacaville and Valeo, especially around us, because they're in close proximity to us.
Well, my original ideas was, was centered around the navigation center. It just seems that we would need many conversations to, to make that happen.
Correct.
And Rick, you looked at the one in, was it North Orange County that you looked at? That's a, that's a grouping from the Nor- North Orange County.
Right, it was in Placentia, and they had about a few cities all working together on it, and it was very well-run, organized. And it took a while to get the support of the other cities for that location, but they did get it. So I think that's what we're going to need to do, is really, you know, have some discussion with the other cities.
Rick, did that include financial support? Because what the city manager said is, we become a magnet, we get so good at doing what we're doing. Because what I don't want to happen, or see happen, which I know has happened, is the homeless getting encouraged to leave other cities, and they get dumped into Fairfield.
It, it did include financial support.
Well, and, and let me clarify that as well, Councilmember Tim, because Vacaville, the city of Vacaville is already providing funds to three-ten back for shelter beds. The city of Sassoon City just approved, I think, using CDBG funds for shelter beds at three-ten back. The city of Benicia is paying for shelter beds at three-ten back. Solano County is paying for shelter beds at three-ten back.
What is, what is the total, what is the total number of beds? Fifteen, maybe?
Oh, gosh. Vacaville is five, I think Sassoon is two, Benicia's one. And the county, I'd have to, I'd have to go back and look. I have the numbers, but I'd have to go back and look. I think it's maybe twenty or so. But there, you know, they have beds right now that are filled that aren't funded. But my point being that the other jurisdictions are paying for them to have them available. Fairfield. So I can have discussions with staff in the other cities, which, you know, again, we have those great relationships, but it's, it, it brings it to a whole new level when you're having those conversations from the elected to an elected.
Okay. Yeah.
I just, I'm only, you know, I'm only so amazing.
I just have one other comment. Don, I'm certain that in any homeless encampment, there are some folks who emerge as leaders. Are we using them? Are we educating them and trying to get them to help us while they help themselves?
I'm so glad you brought that up, Mayor. I neglected to mention that. That is another one of our really big key components this year, is that we need to make sure that we have homeless and/or formerly homeless in our discussions as far as our strategic planning. So, yes, particularly for our racial Equity Lab, they are actually creating a, an advisory body that is specifically those that are homeless. We, and for the gas analysis that we did, we definitely wanted the input from those that are experiencing it, right? It's, we can think we know what the answers are, but we need to be hearing that from those that are living it. So I appreciate you bringing that up. Again, I think this is something that has been lacking in the past, and we really want to expand on that this year for 2021. And we'll see that in the racial equity, and I think hopefully more with the outreach.
Well, I, I've seen that firsthand with the American Samoan Church and Pastor Ladue. I've watched him reach out and pick an individual and give him a responsibility, and how wonderful it was to see that person take a bit of pride, not only in how he looked, and how he presented himself, and then others asked to help too. So it's a good model sometimes.
Yes.
Any other comments, colleagues?
Just add to that piece in regards to the leadership, well, bringing up those people in the homeless community. I think also sharing the success stories that we've had is very important to the community knows we've been doing. I think we've had this discussion a little before, but you know, Councilmember Thompson and I have been going out and visiting these service providers, and you know, they do amazing work, and to be able to hear the stories of whether it's a program that they're doing successful, or an individual's story. I know we have in the past, but I think being able to bring that more to the forefront, so the community can see that we have individuals in this community who are very dedicated to that population, and there is a lot of hard work going into these, into these, into these lives. So just another point about that, bringing those stories to, to, to like.
Thank you. Other comments? Don, thank you very much. Mr. City Manager.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, Mr. Mayor, at this point, then, we've, we've had some discussion. Don's presented some proposed strategies here moving forward. I think it might be helpful if she re-presents those to you as far as what we believe should be the next steps and goals. If the council's comfortable with that, then we'll simply put that into place and start building around the, the, the financing side, so that you have an opportunity to approve budgets as they come up. Or if you want to have additional discussion about those things, if there's additional information. Again, this is designed so that we can understand what the council's priorities are with this. If it's just homelessness, that's pretty broad. So we've, we've got a few things here that she's established. So let's have her re-address those, and if the council is good with that, great. If there's something we're missing, we'll, we'll add that or replace that.
Okay.
Thank you, Stefan. So again, just a quick review of these items again, is establishing and reworking the, the funding for the Navigation Center with a regional approach for that funding to cover that one million a year deficit. A Kahoots-type of model here in Fairfield is a second option, which would provide an alternative and support for our police department and response to calls for service that are non-crime-related. A third option is the Ohio Street Shelter Operations. A lot of funding has gone into rehabbing that property. We could use twenty-four of those beds with a shelter, an outside shelter operator, and get those full. City Church, we can make that pop-up shelter a permanent type of a shelter to transition them from that pop-up into other transitional type of housing or services. Mission Samoa, as I mentioned, is eager and willing and wanting to do an emergency shelter to complement their transitional and permanent supportive housing for twenty-six beds. We can expand our current tenant-based rental assistance program and tie those funds to permanent supportive housing, which would enable us to assist an additional twenty individuals and families and/or families. And then, of course, the motel conversion, which obviously would be a long-term goal with all that goes into that and the costs, but that would enable us to assist anywhere from thirty-five to sixty individuals, depending on the size of the motel, that we're able to convert, and that would again be permanent supportive housing. So those are our, our opportunities and options. And again, those that are bolded there are those shelter beds there are ones that we believe even by through the Navigation Center, the Ohio Street Shelter, City Church, Mission Samoa, and the expanding the TBRA program, we believe that even with just those, we would be able to be beefing up those shelter beds and increasing that permanent supportive housing, in addition to what Housing Services is currently working on, that by doing that, within the next five years, we would be able to reduce our homelessness by fifty percent.
And Council, you, you see the Kahoots Crisis Assistance Program there. There's a model that is being worked on right now with the county that we've been working on for several months. The county's working on, as we understand it, hiring mental health professionals that will work within that program. Fairfield and Sassoon are the first two cities that would be piloting that, and we're thinking that that may start as early as March. So more to come on that. We'll have some, some information that will come to you, but that's an additional thing that is being looked at and worked on that county level. So when we talk about county cooperation and that, there are, there is some movement happening there that we're excited about. So, Don, what are we looking at then for an expenditure for that first year? Because this is what the count, council asks to, when it comes budget time, to, to approve. What are we looking at?
We're looking at a total cost for those shelter beds would be one and a half million. Again, I think for that Navigation Center piece, obviously, we would want to be working with the other cities and the county to share in some of that cost, and also we potentially have some grant funding that would help cover, we have a one-year cost that we think would help cover that. And then the use of our PLHA funds that would help with the city that would offset some of that as well. So, but that's the only one on here that would be a regional cost. So as far as Ohio Street, City Church, and Mission Samoa, that's three half a million there for, and that's for an entire year. So, you know, in comparison to others, that would get us a hundred, a hundred beds. Assuming we can find an operator for a hundred and fifty thousand for the Ohio Street, which I think we will, that would get us a hundred beds right there, and then
And what are the funding sources that you're looking at for those? Is that general fund money? About a half a million in general fund money for that, and then another up to a million in general fund money for the Navigation Center, but there's funding opportunities attached to that, or where are you looking?
Yes, exactly. And, and thank you for bringing that up, because that would help us accomplish two things. One, it would help to, one, see what that return on investment would be, as we talked about earlier, and to see what models are working and what isn't, where we're getting the biggest impact. And also, it would help us in the meantime, identify alternative funding sources that would hopefully potentially replace the use of general fund dollars, so that we could use, whether it's grant funding or some other type of funding.
So that sets us some information for the council. I think we would look to the council now to find out, how do you want us to proceed? We can continue to flesh this out in some detail and present that information. If you're good with this direction that we're going, or we can flex.
Yeah, I'd like to see a timeline as quickly as we can.
Okay.
Vice Mayor Vicaro, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for saying that. You took the words out of my mouth right there. Actually, more or less to the Navigation Center. So, Don, I know there's been talks, talks with Shelter Solano regarding this. So how fast are you, do you think we can get this up and going?
Well, it, it will depend on the direction that you and the city manager give me and my team, and what we're able to work within our capacity. If we have seventeen projects we have to develop, it's, it's going to be right? So we're hoping we can focus on, again, that where we're going to get the most impact and get the best results. That being one of them. And then, and we think if we keep it narrow and concise, that we'll be able to realistically achieve all that.
Okay, so, yeah, and Okay. So, yeah, and, and you know, I, I, as you know, we visited City Church and I saw the work they're doing there and also Bay North. And, you know, I like the direction we're going in. I think you're right, you know, that all these different pieces fit a puzzle. I definitely would like to see, you know, if it was for my direction, I would like to see that navigation center, you know, us start moving forward with that as soon as we can. And that might mean more talks with Shelter Solano regarding that and, uh, John Ekstrom. But, um, I do like the direction, you know, with, with Mission Samoa, with City Church, with Bay North, with all the different, you know, programs that we have going right now. But, um, as the mayor said, yeah, timeline would be good. Absolutely. So.
If the council is good with what's been presented, what we'll do then is we'll go back, create a timeline for these projects. I think I'm hearing your, your highest priority here. You want the navigation center going pretty quickly, it sounds like.
Yes.
I'm getting head nods from everybody on that. We have other things like the permanent supportive housing. I think we're looking, uh, Latan's letting me know that we're looking at maybe May or June on some of that stuff, but why don't you let us go back then and put together a timeline with the costs and bring that back to the council for your, for your support and approval? Are you good with that, Dawn?
Thumbs up?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Good. Thank you.
Mayor, I
Yes. Councilman Tim?
And, and I absolutely support the navigation center as well as the rest of them, but, um, I, I think that probably some of them aren't going to qualify or aren't going to want to be at the navigation center and maybe City Church in the pop-up. So I think that's also very, very important. But I think what also is important, and I'm not trying to criminalize homelessness, not at all. But we'll talk about this next year and next year and next year. And I think what we need to start now is legislative process, legislative action, going back to what are we going to do when they don't want to cooperate? They want to stay on the linear trail. And everything that we do doesn't work. Right now, folks, we, all we have is a carrot. We don't have a stick. And like I said, you don't go to, you don't go to jail for being homeless, but you go to jail for being under the influence and, you know, breaking a bunch of laws. I understand we've gone way to the left, way to the right. Maybe we can get some sense of normalcy, but I would like to see a legislative action platform started, and it might take a year, two years. But that needs to include the Sheriff's Department, the DA, it needs to include, uh, the courts. Because it's all hand in glove. And like I said, we can feed you, treat you, we can do everything. But if you don't want to go along with the program, we're going to continue this until who knows when. So legislative platform, legislative action, I think we can start not today or not tomorrow, but I think it should be down the road. It goes hand in glove. So that's my feelings, Mayor. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Councilman Tonason again, please.
Yeah, I'm good with the, the, the direction that you're going, Dawn, uh, and Stefan. The, um, I'd like to see as we progress down this road, the, the numbers, so, so we're using numbers, I understand from a year ago, and the numbers have decreased. If, if they have increased significantly, say above the, I don't know if it's 526 or 556, what the number was before, then we have some more discussion. But if we're at 277 now, again, I know it's a snapshot in time, but if we're at 277 now and the new numbers come out and we're 377, I mean, I'm just throwing numbers out there, then we're still making progress and we still have something to bite on to. So I like the directions that you're going. I think the, 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 the motels are, you know, a bit down the road, but getting the city spaces fixed now, you know, the City Church, Samoa, the, the ones that are in our, our backyard right now. And then certainly the nav system, uh, doing a regional approach with, you know, help from outside agencies or, or other cities. Uh, I'm good with that, and I, I appreciate the direction that you're going, and I appreciate the numbers. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, colleagues? Councilman Panduro, please.
Thank you. I saw, I'm also in agreement with what's presented this evening. A timeline would be great to just see, to see it in, you know, in writing. And also for me, just because, you know, learning is, trying to learn as much as I can, what would that navigation center include? With the services, you know, where is that money coming from as well? How many individuals? What does that mean? What does that look like? So that we all understand fully what that, that central would look like and the impact that it would and could, and could have in our community. Thank you.
Okay. Any concluding comments, Stefan?
Can I confirm before? I'm sorry. Did, did we or did we not establish a subcommittee?
We haven't done that yet.
So, so Dawn, let's, uh, put together the timelines. You and I can talk afterwards and compare our notes. So we need to put together the timelines, uh, the different costs. Again, here's the project plan for each item, when it can roll out realistically. Continue to track the data, uh, because that's an important component of seeing where the successes are, what's changed. The legislative, uh, component is, uh, is highly important. We want to get on top of that so that we're, um, taking a look at the other issues that are involved. We talked about collecting data and that's everything from how many fires or what's the crime going on? I mean, we, we track everything. So there's a story here to understand and then tell as we get the information. And, and then we'll bring that back to the city council.
I'd like you also to reach out to the Chamber of Commerce as well. Because some of those business owners have vested interests in what we do here and how we do it and how efficient it is.
Okay. And then, uh, so if, if we've got all of that, Mr. Mayor, I think the only other thing that we have is, um, the next agenda item for retreat. We have a listing of things. The, the second item, now this is something that I would say will be brought back to the council during one of our council meetings within the next 30 days, I would say. So we need to know from the council what your next item is that you'd like to discuss in retreat. Heart of Fairfield is one of those high ones that you've identified. If you'd like, we can do a Heart of Fairfield slash economic development to kind of talk about what's going on there in the same format that we did here on homelessness, but I'll leave that to the council.
Any ideas, colleagues?
Well, I certainly think that the Heart of Fairfield is going to be an important one, and it seems to be the, the hot button that we're dealing with right now. So that, that would certainly be something that I would be in favor of.
Yeah. I, I think that's going to be unanimous. So, yeah.
So I will, uh, have Kelly reach out to each of you and work with David Gassaway on, uh, scheduling that, uh, that next council retreat. I don't think we have another one scheduled yet, do we?
No.
No. So, so we'll, uh, we'll get that one scheduled, a similar format as this then.
Okay. Concluding comments, anybody?
Timeframe for that, Stefan? Are we looking at, uh, uh, next week sometime or?
Heart of Fairfield?
Yeah.
Uh, it's dependent upon you all when you're available. I'd, I'd like to get that within the next week or so, but it's, it's dependent upon your schedules.
Yeah. And I would hope that we'd be able to get all seven of us there too.
Yeah. Um, and just so that you know, uh, Bill has been working with, uh, Councilmember Moy, who's out of town, trying to get her connected. It's been frustrating for both of them. She's been trying to get on this, this Zoom from where she's at, uh, working with Bill, but they've just not been able to get her connected, unfortunately.
Okay. There is no other business before this, buddy. We are adjourned. Very efficient. Thank you.
Well done. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank all of you.